Good evening and welcome to the Spencer Board of Selectmen's Business Meeting of January 12, 2015. It's about 5 past 6:00 and we're in the McCourt Social Hall. If everyone could rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Business meeting of November 12, 2014, and December 10, 2014, workshop of November 19, 2014, and December 17, 2014. We'll get a chance to look at them. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Can we discuss?
Do you need a second first?
Second first.
Oh, sorry.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Discussion?
Thank you. If my memory is not what it used to be, but it seems to me that on Wednesday, November 19th, wasn't that the day we relocated to the library for the...
It was the tax hearing?
Yes.
Oh, did I have that?
You had McCourt Social Hall.
Oh, thank you.
You are correct.
Okay. Well, I figure if anybody ever reenacts our select board meetings, I should have the right background onstage, right?
And you had that I was absent. I didn't look for that when I said it.
That was in Bull Ride Lake, so that really stuck in my head. All right.
All right, so we can amend the motion to...
Motion to approve with the correction.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And aye? Opposed? Good. Would anyone like to come forward with a citizen's input? You're the only guy on that. Nothing? Okay. Do we have any communications? No communications. Let's move on to old business. Public hearing continued on Church Street parking during funeral masses. We still open on that?
Correct. What we had done when we first had that meeting early December, we continued the public hearing to tonight, but in between, we were going to schedule a site visit, which you guys had this past Saturday morning. So the public hearing is still open. I don't see anyone here, but if you'd like to talk about the Church Street parking issue during funeral mass and discuss whether or not you want to take any action on that tonight.
Well, let me just set the stage on that. We, Selectmen Stevens, Woodbury, and myself met with Mr. Moran who requested this change, Father Jim from Mary Queen of the Roser was there, and two property owners.
Roger Witt.
Roger Witt and a gentleman one...
Victor Droning.
Okay. They were nice enough to take out some towels, sorry, to talk to us. And we had some boasters back and forth on, you know, what our role was to do any changes on parking, but in the end, and correct me if I've got this, I get this wrong, gentlemen, that we, they agreed we could paint the curb to a certain point, no parking, and provide a sign that said, "Loading only, 9 to 12, seven days a week," on the telephone pole. So I can go up there with them or whoever needs to go up there. There's a telephone pole across, directly across the street from the entrance of the small parking area on Church Street in front of Witt's property.
It's a little farther down.
Yeah, a little farther down. It's in between the two properties, up to the other side of his curb for about a 12-inch segment, the next, where the curb starts again, the first segment, and it's carved out...
It's a few feet.
I think you all have a color map, and I think in your packet. I mean, I could point it out for discussion, but yeah, if not... Is that the other?
Nope.
Oh, yeah.
Church here?
Where that little red car is.
Correct.
That's right, right.
So between the, between the two little, it looks like yellow, where it's kind of blocked off where that red car is, he would, the agreement was to, you know, paint that curb yellow and put that sign on that pole right where that car is, the back end of that car, I'm assuming the back end is where that pole is.
But if you're gonna have a sign there that says "9 to 12 only," but then you can't paint it yellow because yellow is at no time, right?
Well, we, how do you, how would we...
I think you just have, you would have a sign, you know, usually it's from, a sign from, no, that's a different one.
If you paint the curb and you can't park there at all.
Correct.
It's just like when you, like, you come to a corner, they paint the curb back supposedly 50 feet, so you don't park within 50 feet of the corner.
Yep.
So you don't want to park, you don't want to paint it yellow. Put a sign up there, there's a pole.
Right.
Up the other side of, just before Vic's house.
Yep.
There's another pole there. Put one facing this way.
Correct.
And one facing this way, and you'd be all set.
Say from 9 to 12, no parking in between times.
It only involves Roger's tenants in his house. That's it. So if Roger can't go in, then tell him, you know, "Durk."
Yeah, plus, you know, just from looking at it, there was, there's plenty of off-street parking with that problem.
Yeah, they got driveways down the back to park him.
Yep.
What number is he on the plan here? 223? 221?
222.
222.
There's two of them in there, isn't there?
222 and 221.
Where that driveway splits.
Those are both Rogers.
Yeah.
Those are both Rogers, yes. And 223, I'm not sure who owns it now, but that used to be LeVey's house before. Those guys did the garage doors.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was his house. I'm not sure who lives there. There only is one car in that whole driveway, and he's always in there because when I was plowing, he used to park there. I asked him to move in the driveway, and he's moved in the driveway, he's parked in there ever since, so.
So if we, if we can't paint the curb, then the two signs would be, they're okay with it, as long as the signs are the loading zone only, 9 to 12, seven days a week.
Everybody seemed like they could live with that. It seemed like it was the most amicable and...
Right. I was going to check with you as if, if I could, if we could, I mentioned it to Father Jim, in just case he didn't mention it, the one, the one thing that the property owners did have an issue with was further up where there, where there was, where there wouldn't be the loading restriction, that the church folks parked there on Sundays, and...
They don't park with that. Well, actually, Sunday they did park there because the place was loaded Sunday. They had Prospect Street all the way up, they had the whole parking lot, that, and they had all Church Street.
Yeah.
So we will have to tell them not to park there.
Yeah, so I mentioned, Jim, maybe in the program, we have a...
I'll have the O.D. make up a thing and...
That'd be great.
Head it out so they get the message. If not, I'll give it to them, and they'll get the message if I get it, so.
Yeah, we went all over the place, from funerals to weddings, we talked about everything that went on.
I just have a question because Al had brought up public safety.
Yeah.
And that's his reason, but I don't remember hearing any input from the police chief or the fire chief on that situation.
We've actually provided a letter, an email. It's in your packet. It says, "Parking problems on Church Street." It's an email, and it starts with one, he gives the history in terms of what the status of parking is and winter parking, and then his last sentence is, "I have no public safety concerns in regard to this request, however, I would suggest holding a public hearing." So, you know, anyone can make, I think what Al Warren was doing was making a blanket statement that, you know, when there's two cars parked there, you're not going to fit emergency vehicle in between. I think that was...
If anybody parks at either side, you have enough room for one going through.
Yep.
The curb is high on this side here, you kill your car, and then the road's only 18 feet wide, so.
I think if you were, if they were sitting here and you asked them, you know, if you, in this situation, you show the picture that Al showed, they'd say, "Yeah, we can't get a fire truck in front of it." But they're not going to come out and say, you know, "You guys shut the parking on that street. That's a decision for you guys to make," based on having a public hearing and taking all the input.
So with a little back and forth, that was the compromise, compromise agreement. So do we, you want to have a motion?
You'd have to, you have to motion to close the public hearing, and then you'd have to have discussion and then a vote.
And before we do, I just want to, if you're gonna, if you can't paint the curb, I'm going to go back to my original statement back when, and I had the conversation with Al, because my nephew happens to be a funeral director working for a local funeral home who says, "When they're out there, they put cones out. You're talking about a space in front of that church to park a hearse where there's no parking anyway. So you mean to tell me they can't take the body in the church, move the hearse, just like Pillsbury did the last funeral, because I made it a fact to go up and look? And then when they're ready to enter mass, one of the guys came out and brought it back around." I mean, it just seems like we keep reinventing the parking thing where, you know, if you're going to hang a sign, what's the difference if you had cones? I don't get it.
Yeah, we did discuss that, and that was brought up, just from the Mr. Moran's...
The only reason I bring it up is...
Roger would want a sawhorse at the corner. I mean, the residents feel something.
I don't know. That's just my...
Well, that was, that was discussed, Gary.
And I'm sorry I couldn't be there. Obviously, I started a new job.
Congratulations.
I'm back on that weekend kick.
Those were brought up, and just, you know, they even brought the fact that why can't you go and just go across the street, knock on the door? If I have a 300-person funeral, I can't...
No, I get why he's trying to do it. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying is, once you make an exception, what's the next one? Do we not pack up by the other church up on the terrace because there's not enough room and now go tell M.A.P.I. that they can't pack their cars here? I just think it's pending the horse box. That's just my opinion.
Well, just to, Gary, the last funeral we had there, okay, was McNeil. There was not a parking place, any place, including Prospect Street.
I know you're going to have that.
You know? So where would you do, what would you do with the...
The other day, they were packed, the other day, you talked about it being packed with church, and they were up on Mechanic Street, so I mean, I get that part, but...
Well, that's the thing. I mean, you could get up Prospect Street. There was cars parked on both sides of Prospect Street, and I said to Father Jim the same thing. You've got a seven-foot pass there, cars parked on both sides. Something had to get up there, you know? I think he would have been putting the old metal, pushing, you know? But we've done that before, too. But, you know, certain funerals, you don't have a lot of people, and you could do what Gary says, bring it over Prospect Street, then just bring it around. But then, you know, like I say, we'd have to, you know, sometimes you get a big funeral, and then you ain't got no place to put it. So what do you do there?
But in life, there's inconveniences, is all I'm saying.
Yeah.
And when I talked to the other, you know, the other funeral homes, because one of the comments Al made was that, you know, they're all in the same boat and they're all on the same page, well, that wasn't the answer I got, so I just...
Then we got into conversations about the, you know, area. We went, we went off to a tangent that we, you know, respect for the passing and the people who had...
Right.
So it was, it just, we moved into that, to that compromise.
So they were fine with putting the two signs, 9 to 12?
Yep. And I told them, I said, "If this becomes a..."
Well, try it. If it doesn't work, then we can always change it again, you know, back to the way it was.
And that's exactly what I told them. I said, "We reevaluate the stuff all the time."
Yep.
But, you know, to be fair, that was discussed, so it wasn't...
Well, I've had a talk with a couple of them since you did, because I was plowing over there, and I couldn't get through with my plow, okay?
Yeah.
Because there wasn't enough room. So I just went and asked a guy, I says, "You know, if it snows and stuff and you see me out here, would you just come out and move?"
Yeah.
And he says, "Oh," he says, "you're in a white truck." I says, "Yeah, you see that white truck? Come out, move your butt, you know, and then I'll plow in front of your house."
Yep.
You know? It clears up for you so you can park there. "Oh, that's good." And he hasn't, you know, and all the people that have been parking in the parking lot that they used to have trouble with, there's only one.
There's only one that I...
There's only one that doesn't trust me, okay? The rest of them, they see me, they come out, they move the vehicles, and I haven't had the parking that we used to do there before. But I got one woman that I'm going to straighten her out.
So what you're saying is there's one that trusts you, and the others don't, that's why they move, right?
Exactly. You know, I'm going to have to straighten her out, so.
Why, that's not surprising. I don't know.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
But I will make a message to my wife, and she'll put a thing up to tell people on Sundays they can't park on Church Street.
Yeah, and Father Jim was 100% behind me.
Yeah. But he's forgetful, so I'll make sure the, that message gets put out there.
Beaufort said that on tape, I did not. Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll take a moment to close the public hearing. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing.
You just didn't stay with what I said.
And I'll second whatever he said.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And I'll state a motion on the compromise for...
The public hearing, wasn't it?
Yeah, they just called, ordered to close the public hearing.
You didn't ask anybody anything to say?
Oh, that's right.
That's right.
Reopen it?
Yeah, we'll reopen. No, we'll reopen public hearing, Al. I mean, I didn't, I wasn't...
I think there was an assumption made because you don't live in that area, that that's, but...
It's still public, isn't it?
Yeah, it's still public. Absolutely. Absolutely.
You want to speak, Al, come on in. We'll open it back up.
Yeah, let's open, let's reopen. A motion to reopen the public hearing.
Motion reopen.
I have a motion, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It was reopened.
I still don't understand why we make this for one business. I haven't heard the other funeral director in town from Uppingham Lane, and I've been to funerals that have been packed like he said, and there's still room if you pull in that little lot. They don't block the driveway. He can park in that little lot, back out, when it's time. He knows exactly when the mass ends. He's done enough of them. And we're making concessions for one business. The other guy hasn't been here, another funeral home from Lester that comes up and uses it. Nobody else complains but him. Is he making, saying to the people on Maple Street, gee, they took away the parking, why don't you park in my lot? He ain't making no concessions for them, but we're going to make concessions for him. That's my complaint, and I said it before at the last hearing. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Any additional comments?
Just at the end of the day, for clarification, the owner of that property who has houses there to park in that area, he was okay with that compromise?
He was all right with that compromise, back and forth. If there was going to be any kind of restriction, he's, he asked for that.
But he also asked for a sawhorse at the corner that says "Funeral in Progress," because he feels that if people know that there's a funeral in progress, they'll just not go down that street and they'll continue up and find another place around.
Yeah, we could, we could ask Mr. Moran to make a few...
You've got to hit cones or something.
Well, what we'll do is we'll have him make some signs, see how it's for the funeral. Instead of putting a sawhorse out there, put a little thing that, you know, they do for the funerals, they have those metal racks they put.
I'm just saying, if you're going to have a sawhorse and you're going to have cones, I mean, this is just a, let it go.
But do we want to delay, delay a vote on this until we reach out to Mr. Moran?
Yeah, we'll talk with Al.
Okay.
And what are you going to ask him?
Well, they say that, I don't know if you've seen it before, but he has these little metal signs that say "Funeral today" or "Funeral something." He'd go up there, put them out, you know, 9 o'clock in the morning or whenever, just to say, "There's a funeral," just to let people know. And like you said, instead of putting the sawhorse down at the corner, which would get creamed and...
We brought that up to him.
I brought that up, and I said, "If those are out there, then all this, everything we're doing is a mute point because you're already telling people there's a funeral."
But the issue that, the issue that he said, when we brought that up, and I don't have any opinion on this, I'm just saying, just for clarification, when we brought that up to him about putting out the cones, he said that when he gets out there in the morning before the mass, there's already cars parked there.
Right.
And what I said was, he didn't want to leave the hearse, he didn't want to have to move the hearse, and I'm saying that's a no-parking zone. Even, even if we do what you're doing, that spot in front of that church is painted, correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm pretty sure it is.
It is a no-parking space, so, I mean, in all reality...
There's never been any parking on that side of the street, ever, ever that I know of.
That's why it's, it's been painted that way for years, Bo.
Yeah.
And as far as I'm concerned, no offense, but when he parks his hearse there, he's breaking the law as it is. So that's my frustration, not that I'm against anything other than I just can't vote for it. That's just my opinion.
Do we want to delay the vote until we request, did we request this again? That there was a request to put a sawhorse up the road and...
Well, not a sawhorse, but a...
A sign of some sort up and, up the hill on that corner.
Maybe, maybe see if that works and how it works with him, and then maybe we can revisit...
It's just the idea of putting out a...
Maybe restrict the parking.
You know, sometimes they do, if they know it's going to be a big funeral, they'll come up and they'll set them up before, and I have seen that before, okay? It's just a little triangle sign that says "Funeral today" or "Funeral in progress." If he just went up and put a couple of them on that side of the road, just to let people that there's going to be a funeral there, and then pick them up after the funeral.
So, so is he doing it the night before? I mean, I mean...
Well, he could do it early, he could do it early that morning, you know?
What if...
Well, the thing is, if you put it there the night before, then somebody's going, kids are going to come by and steal it.
What I'm saying is that the people who are living there are parked there, you know, overnight.
Already there, you're saying.
They're already parked there, they're in the house, sleeping, making breakfast, getting ready for work, whatever. So he comes there, and there's a car parked there. He's not going to be able to put a sign in the spot when there's a car there.
No, no, on this side of the road.
On the north, on the south side?
Just to tell people that there's, yeah, on the side, there's no parking. That's where he usually puts the sign.
But the problem is, is when he, if he's, if there's a car parked on the other side, and he parks there, there's no room, that's the whole point, there's no room for anyone to get through. So I think the whole point of the signs was putting signage on the south side of the street, so people weren't parked there, so the hearse is parked there, there's nobody on the other side, and then emergency vehicle can get through. The only way you can get a sign out there is maybe if he gets out there the afternoon before, the night before, so the people, when they come home at night, they know not to park there, and they got to park somewhere else. I mean, that's, that's the only thing, I don't know how you're going to get around the sound, sign thing, early in the morning, if he gets there and people already parked there. I mean, there's no point in putting a sign and a sawhorse at the end of the street if people already parked there.
Yeah.
I mean, that doesn't...
If you put it there that night, the kids are going to steal them, so, you know, what do you do? I don't know. I think we go back to the sign thing. If they were, if Roger was happy with that, with putting the sign up, try that. If it doesn't work...
There was, there was no happiness in...
There was no happiness.
In this, in this, in this deal.
Or do we just leave it the way it is?
I, I personally, the compromise was there, everyone agreed to the compromise.
I wasn't there, so I don't know what you guys...
It is also seemed to begin, address some of those Sunday morning parking issues as well, which, you know, it's inevitable...
I'll take care of it Sunday morning, don't worry.
It was inevitable, it was going to, it was going to bring in...
I'll handle Sunday morning. They don't argue with me, okay?
I mean, currently, there's, there's no issue because there's no parking there during the winter months anyways, right now.
But that's only overnight, not during the day.
So, I mean, currently, right now, he can technically put out his signs because no one's allowed to park there at night because of the winter parking ban. So right now, that compromise works, putting signs out across the street so during the day, they can't park, and maybe we can revise this at a later date, maybe close to the winter parking ban, maybe give everybody a chance to see how it works with the signs versus actually going out and putting them on the poles and doing restrictions that way.
Did he bring that up, that it was only a certain time of the year that he had the problem?
There's only certain hours.
Or it was days of the week.
Then it's not every day, either.
It's Monday through Saturday or something like that, usually, right?
Yeah, I, Al's, Al's point was that it only happens 40, 40 times on average, 40 times a, a year for a funeral. So, well, you know, what's the will of the vote? We have it, we can vote it, vote, if we, the vote goes one way, we can write a letter to...
I would move the original proposal, the compromise involving the signs. I think we, we worked it out with the neighbors, it's, it's a respectful move as far as the church is concerned, you know, notwithstanding Al's comments about the, the business. I do think it does come down to some, you know, fundamental aspects of community respect and if we can accommodate the hearse in, in front, which is where Father, which we understood.
Well, how about, it might be easier for Mexicali, say, in the center of town, to have the loader, that the guy unloading their product, to come in the front door than the back door, because it's easier for them, say. What's stopping them from saying, "Well, you know, this is my business, is out, see the Pandora's Box that we're about to open?"
Well, I mean, if that's...
Well, you can't park on Main Street for the Mexicali.
But I'm just saying.
To unload, okay? First of all.
But it's up there. Well, Waco, people complain about the big tractor-trail truck blocking on Main Street every day.
Now, he's usually on the side of the road when he unloads. He, once in a great while, he might stop in the road, but nine-tenths of the time, he's in the side of the road, because if he's got a truck coming, they move their vehicles out of the way, so.
What I could say is that we did for Maple Street, the liquor store by Chestnut Street in Maple, Craig's there, we actually, we put, after that whole discussion, we put no parking signs there.
Absolutely.
Right, because they used to park it...
Because they...
With the road narrowed, you couldn't get through there.
So for a matter of public safety, he said, "We're going to put no parking, and we're going to force them to access from the..."
So they all use the parking lot, pretty much now. Once in a great while, you get somebody parked on the other side of the road.
Right, and that's a no-parking zone, and typically, and Al wants to park in a no-parking zone. And we're going to make the concession for him, too.
Well, that's another thing, I mean, should that be, should be, just doesn't make any sense that we have no parking for. I mean, should, should there be parking allowed there? I mean, what else is going to park the hearse when someone pulls up? I mean, you, I mean, I can't...
You've got to go in the front door. You gotta go in the front door.
That's what I'm saying. Actually, we were looking at the paint, the, the yellow paint on that curb as well and say, you know.
Just, just like when there's a wedding, you go to the front door, you don't come in the back door.
And they're loading for funerals only. I know, I know, that's what I mean. No one ever, no one's ever, no one's ever said anything for years and years and years. Just out of respect, that that's where it's gonna, that has to go, right?
What I heard.
So, they put that there so nobody else parks there during the day.
It's been that way twenty-eight years.
Right.
We've been dealing with it for twenty-eight years. That's what I kept on hearing from them. We've been dealing with it for twenty-eight years and if it changes, it changes. We'll have to deal with it. It's not a, to me, that's not compromise. It's just someone who's willing to give up because they know, no, their opinion doesn't matter. That's just what I heard from a particular gentleman.
He, he, he came to a compromise because.
He's, he's been dealing with people parking in front of his driveway where he's gotta park his car up the street on mechanic, so hopefully he can get out if there's ever an issue during Mass. He says, I've been dealing it, with it for twenty-eight years. Twenty-eight years, they've been doing funerals and weddings and it's never been brought up until Al just brought it up. Is it just because maybe he just wants it to be easier? For his business?
Al, I think if Al were here, he'd refer us back to his original comment about the public safety that we really wanted.
But he's leaving his hearse parked in a no parking zone. That's not public safety.
But I, I mean, the only reason it's no parking there, so no one parks there, so there's a space for the hearse.
There's no parking there during the winter anyways because of the way the winter is. I mean, Christ, at that point, why not make it a one-way street?
You know, and so, I.
I mean, it's dangerous to come off on Maple on that street. I mean, there's a million things that's wrong with that street. And just parking a hearse in front of the church.
I think his, his hearse is gonna park there. Whether, whether we do, the hearse is gonna park there no matter what. So, I think his only concern is the fact that when there's a car parked directly across from the hearse, there's no, no one can get by. I think that was his point. It's not gonna, I don't think it's gonna make his, I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's gonna make his job any easier. His jobs, his job's not gonna change. You know what I mean? Uh, with his hearse, it's still gonna be parked there, right?
But the people across are legally parked and he's illegally parked.
Yeah, but I, I mean, let's, straight face test. Is he really illegally parked? I mean, I mean, the reason that yellow paint there is so they can park the, the hearse in, in the front, right? And so, no one else parks there.
But they can always move it around the side too. I'm a Christian, I go to that church, I'm Catholic.
Yeah.
But there's nothing, nothing stopping him from just moving around the corner. Why can't the church put a sign on their property and says, hearse parking only? Where he can park.
That's what I'm saying. I, I, that's part of my discussion is like, should we be doing that?
That's maybe.
That's what I'm going with this. Is that, is that where we should put us? Just so he's not illegally parked. I mean, just, straight face test, the hearse should be able to park right in front of the steps, right?
To unload.
To unload, right? So, I mean, that's, that's my point is that, should we be looking at that as, and at the same time, we're looking at the other thing and saying, I mean, just so he's not, just so he's complying.
And the mass is an hour, let's face it, right?
Shouldn't there, shouldn't there be a sign that says, town allows parking for hearse during Mass? Are there all the times that you can't, you know?
I mean, I, I think that's, at least that's where I was going with this, if you're going anywhere. I just think you're penalizing. I wasn't there for the conversation.
Yeah, so.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation is you put it to a vote, we move on.
That's right, that's right.
Pass it, pass it.
Someone introduce a motion.
We gotta, we gotta reclose the public hearing.
Right.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing at, uh, I can't think where to collect, six thirty-seven. Um, motion to close. Have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, I'll take a motion, um, on this. I, I, I moved that we, um, enact the compromise. It was reached with, with neighbors in the church and, uh, the local funeral director involving placement of, placement of, of two, um, signs indicate, uh, that the, the space that we have identified in the map be, you know, be, uh, may be available only to, for loading purposes on nine to noon, uh, seven days a week. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Can I second a motion? No.
If there's no second, then there's no vote.
They didn't say there's no vote. Okay. Uh, so, um, as an alternative, I would suggest that we, uh, create, uh, correspondence back to the, uh, individual who requested this, uh, change. On ideas on which he may be able to, um, help the situation.
I, I think that's right, Tony. I think you're right on the money there.
Tony, the reason why I'm not saying anything is I work for the church, so I have to stay. I could discuss it, but I can't take a vote on it, cause I work for the church.
I, I understand. Okay. Very good. Let's move on. Action item. Oh, more parking. No parking limits on Adams Street. Um, is that the one we want, we want this?
That's the one I want.
You're the same man.
Yeah.
All right.
Still wanna get some further.
Yeah, we, uh, we went and visited that, but again, another unique situation where there's a, a two-family house. And apparently there, there's, uh, I'm assuming that they're parking on a strip that we wanna clear to make it a, that turn a safer turn onto Adams. I. Yeah.
It's a hundred and seventy feet.
That's, that's a, again, uh, what we, we reviewed that and what we came out was that Chris wanted to, uh, look at this, uh, at his free time as a live situation. Especially with school buses and how they were turning or coming in the other direction. Um, what kind of safety issue that may be. Um, I know we've, we've heard that it's very, very tight during, during the, uh, pickup and drop-off areas at the, at the schools. We walked it, um, there seems to be very little limited parking for that two-family house. I don't even know if that shed has no parking on it. I don't know if it's, that's theirs.
There is that one.
One seventy-seven.
That one space.
Yes, one space and says no parking.
Right. Says no parking, I don't know why, but it does say.
I was worried that was a three-family, looks like a two-family.
It looks like there was originally one house only on that property on one seventy-seven.
Mm-hmm.
They cut it in half and put, uh, cause that front edge of Adams Street.
One seventy-seven, one, is that what that is?
It looks like they made it, made fronts for, uh, and the second house, but they never had any parking for. Or there could have been two houses on one property.
Yeah, and, and.
And then they divided it, which you can do under exemptions, under zoning, but they never had any parking.
And it looks like an addition was put out, which carved into the property even, even in a stranger way that, look at, that there was a.
You could have went around back, but then they.
Yeah, they, yeah, yeah. So, um, Chris asked to defer, uh, uh, discussion on this until he had a chance to, to look at the, uh, traffic flow.
That's correct.
On that. Is that okay with the board? Delaying further?
It is with me. Bo, is that your area you used to plow?
Yeah.
Right? Cause since we redesigned that road where the handicap walk comes down, you know where the landing is wider now? You know what I mean, coming down Maple?
They narrowed that road down quite a bit right there.
So, that narrowed and, and now.
And then they put a little twist in it too, Gary. It used to come out straight right along the pole.
Cause I know.
Now it just comes up and it actually comes out straight on the Maple Street.
Yeah, and that's the trouble is because you, you have no clearance when you're getting down there. But I know, a week ago, I spent a day in the morning just watching the buses come.
Yeah.
It's tough for two buses just to go by there if one's coming one way and the other's coming the other way.
Yeah.
If you get a chance, look at that with, with him sometime, will ya? Because I looked at it, but I, you know, other than, I think it's tight, but I don't know the difference.
I wanted to redesign the road in the first place, but they did it anyways.
You didn't have a say in it.
I think they needed it because of the handicap accessible.
Right, yeah.
Right, when we did Maple Street, we didn't have a choice.
Right.
You know, I, I thought, I misunderstood. I thought our issue was the radius of the turn coming, coming onto Adams and I'm worried that people parking.
Yep. Where it's, where it's kind of, the pavement looks kind of black there.
Right, the pavement, there, there was an, obviously, there's a no parking, there's a no parking sign on that, on that pole.
Pathway because of, uh.
Right, so we started discussing what we could do if, if we wanted to.
Well, you could.
Again, another, another unique.
That is unique.
House. You know, do we leave them one spot in front because there was no parking there? There was, other than that one.
Bo, this, this one seventy-seven. Is that the last one when you're coming down Maple?
That's on Maple Street.
So, where that parking is in the back, that whole side is parking for that house and it's.
Coming down Maple Street.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. Then there's a wall that drops off onto Adams.
Right, but I thought there used to be a stairway coming up or going down to that other house. It's, I, I don't remember after we redid it.
Yeah, I think they did away with that. It wasn't a half a cent of stairs, right?
There used to be something there because they all used to park up there. I know that.
Could have been one, at, at one time, the same owner on both properties.
Yeah, and that's why I don't know.
Right.
But, but.
Somebody from out of town owns that house up there though.
I don't know where the hell you go with them.
So, as it sits now, uh, there is no off-street parking except for.
And that's the worst section when, if you go there in the morning, if somebody's pulling out, even with the school buses coming. And, and don't forget, this is the, the route out of Howe Village and you have the, uh, seniors that come down there. So, it's very challenging. If you get the opportunity, I think it's a good idea, everybody look at it with the buses if we can.
Boy, but just to, just to say though, that is the, three of us stood there, we, we tentatively identified a spot that looked like it would, it would work to open up that end of Adams Street where it, where it meets Maple without eliminating all the on-street, you know, parking for, for people.
Yeah, again, you could be right. I mean, but we just spent, I don't know, a little over half an hour arguing about public safety and, and if I was questioning public safety, I'd question the school bu- bus route that goes directly to a school. And where's the real public safety? Because it's tight going down there.
So, that's, but you're talking about the bus making the turn or you're talking about the passage?
I'm talking about the passage all the way down because. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bo.
If one bus is blocked there.
The old sidewalk.
Try to come out of Adams Street onto Maple Street.
Right.
And another bus comes down and tries to make that thing.
No way.
You can do it, but you, you gotta almost make a, a complete ninety turn because it's so narrow right there. That's the whole thing. When the two buses meet right there, that's when you end up with a problem.
No, I think we replaced a fence on one of those properties because of when we were doing the road that, uh, one of the fences got hit because it was so close. I, I think we look at it.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, we.
I don't think you wanna penalize somebody from being able to live.
Yeah, well, that, that was our only concern. I mean, and if we, if we, if, again, and it's, that was not a decision, but if we were to give any kind of compromise, it was a very small piece of.
Way down here.
Piece of curb. It was like right near the opening of the driveway.
That's way down, right?
So.
That would affect the buses coming to the.
But. On this map.
Yeah, so we thought that we'd keep it no parking all the way to the, the cutout stairs.
Cause Adams is like this.
It's a pole.
Right, right. And even past the pole. There's actually a cutoff in the old set of stairs. And then go from there to curb, allow them to, to do on-street. If, unless Chris saw some kind of horrible traffic.
Yeah, I just wanna see because, I mean, we were there and Tony's.
Adams is the one that kind of goes off to a different.
My car and John's car were there and there was two cars coming down and one had to wait. Go, and that was just cause of that.
Okay.
So, I just wanna see.
If you stay on the sidewalk.
We'll put this back to the next business meeting. Let's put this on the next twenty-six.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll carry both these over to, uh.
Twenty-six?
Well, there's really gonna be no vote in that.
No, but I mean, if you're gonna look at this.
Oh, you, you, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. I touched with the one above it. Yeah, so put.
So, start with B. B is Adams Street, the corner. We're gonna put that on for the twenty-six. In between now and then, you guys check it out.
And carry Clark Street.
Okay, well, we can do, we'll, we'll talk about that next, but we can't do that.
Okay. Discussion, discussion, we didn't even walk down this one.
No, we didn't.
We didn't go down to Clark. I think we were frozen at that point.
I think, I was called.
It was, it was, it was minus two hundred. I could not feel my feet.
Here's another map that's, uh, all of Clark Street.
What do you want to know about Clark Street?
Well, so we had a discussion the last, when Steve was here, about taking away no parking on both sides of the street all the way down. And there was a vote to do that. However, we would.
Take away no parking?
No.
No, no, make it no parking.
Make it no parking.
Make it no parking.
There hasn't been any parking on that street.
No, there is parking on the south side.
Not, nobody's ever parked on Clark Street. From, from Ash Street down to the pond, nobody's ever parked on that street in twenty years.
No, from the pond down to Ash.
Nope, nobody parks down. Nope, nobody parks.
I, I know Steve made that statement and I'm hearing you say that, but the owners of one fifty-seven are saying that's where they park.
This is Ash.
What they did was.
Well, they just moved there, okay? They, they just bought that house and just moved in there.
Right.
Okay, it just happens that they have two cars. Everybody that lived in that house before had one car. And she, they, they having a stake with the one at one fifty-five.
So, so what they did was.
That's.
They, what they did was they ripped out the landscaping.
Yeah.
In front on one fifty-seven to add a car there.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, and until the other thing where they can park on the left is ironed out. There's, they have a temporary state that they can go ahead and park there. But what they're, what, I emailed the lady and I asked, how would this affect them? Um, and she said, it would be, it would impact us. I, I also know that the neighbors' tenants also park there.
Nobody parks.
So, she says when she has visitors, they park there. And then she says the tenants next door should do as well.
One fifty-five house there.
To park along the edge.
You can park twenty cars in that driveway, okay?
So, what do we do, if anything, for one fifty-seven?
Just happen they have two cars.
Which house is it?
That's Antonovich's old house.
Oh, okay. The little blue one that's.
The little blue one, they got a chain of fence around it, there's a pool in the backyard.
Yep. So, you guys said that, reach out to that person. You guys made the vote, passed it, adopted it, and then you said, reach out to that person if they have a problem, they come back.
I have a look there, I'll have to go take a ride over there tomorrow. Take a look at it.
All right, so, I guess.
So, I mean, I, you say there's no parking. You're, are you saying, A, nobody's ever parked there, or B, there's no parking signs all the way down the street?
I plowed that, Adam, and nobody's ever plowed it back on that street.
But what I'm saying is.
Two different questions.
Two different things.
Yep.
Is there no parking signs all the way down the street?
I don't think so.
Or is it just the fact that in your recollection, no one's ever parked there because they always had off-street parking?
Well, the thing is, okay, if you drive down that street, okay, you get the yellow line in the middle and you come down here and there, you're on the sides of both streets. How could anybody park there? Okay, there's just, there's absolutely no place to park. Cause you got a sidewalk. The road's only fifteen, sixteen feet wide there.
You're, 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 I'm filling up the lane there.
Yeah.
That's correct. When I visited the property, when I visited the property and had a meeting with the lady, I drove down there and I parked right in front of her house on the street.
Down there, yes, you could.
That's what I'm saying.
From.
Right in front of her house, I parked there.
From, uh, what the heck is it? Salem Street down. There's one, two, three houses.
From Salem Street to the pond?
Yeah, there's three houses.
And it looks wider than from Salem Street to.
It is, it is wider down there. Quite a bit wider.
So, it narrows up.
Oh, it narrows up, sort of, right after that.
You can see it.
Salem Street.
You can see it.
Plus, it's probably worse. Yeah, you can see it here.
On the map, you can see it narrows down.
So, it's probably worse now that we redid the sidewalk because the sidewalk ADA compliance, now we know it's full width.
Yeah.
There's no part, there's no sidewalk on one, on the side that one fifty-seven is though.
No, it, the sidewalk's on this side of the street.
On the north side.
All right, so this.
South side.
South side. Right.
Oh, right.
Well, you get Clark Street, that's where that, there's a pole right on the corner.
Right on the corner.
Clark and Salem, and we have to go around that to get back on the sidewalk to finish plowing up the street.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
So, it's wide and then you come down and it narrows. So, in the wide part, one fifty-seven is still in the wide part.
Yeah, I, that's, that was our mistake, Mr. Administrator. We just didn't do the visit on this.
We didn't put it off.
Put it off. I, I wanna, I wanna schedule a, a walkthrough on that as well.
Now, there is an empty lot, what is it, fifty-nine, right across the street from fifty, one fifty-seven. That's an empty lot. I don't know if that's, who owns that, but there is an empty lot right there.
Well, it could go with the property that's next to it that doesn't have a number.
Right.
And they own both and it's just two separate, it was two separate.
That was, that was bully's house, the next one up, and I'm not sure if they even own that lot right now.
Hey, but where, where's our purview to go tell someone to go park in an empty lot?
Oh, I can't do that.
And Joanna made a statement last meeting about, uh, where one fifty-five is, the parcel.
We own one fifty-five.
Okay, and it looks like. One fifty-six is parking on our parcel.
Well, the lines aren't exactly correct. I mean, this is, this isn't an exact survey. This is an assessment.
This is grass here.
When I went by.
Yeah.
It looks like.
There's dirt here and grass here.
I, I agree with you, yes. You're, I agree.
Looks like the shed on one fifty-six is definitely on.
Correct.
Town property.
Right. They, if you look on one fifty-five, you can see, when they drive around the house, they drive on town property and then they park up against.
That garage you're talking about is actually off of Salem Street. That garage you're looking at right there.
Yeah, no, I'm.
He's talking about one fifty-five by the pond.
They have a shed in the back.
By where the fence is, right?
The fence is. Oh, yeah.
No, I think there's a.
A little shitty.
It's like a barbecue grill there.
Yeah.
We've had.
All right, we'll take a look at it and, uh, figure this out.
Maybe come to a, they can use maybe town property if they maybe during a snowstorm, one fifty-seven could park in their driveway.
Well.
I think it.
We, that's, that's kind of what the.
I think that was.
They had called me about New Year's Eve because they were having people over and they're like, we can't, what are we, you know, they just started, lived in there, they're having problems with the neighbor.
Right.
But now she's like, I wanna move, cause the situation stinks. So, she asked if she could park there and it was like, you know, New Year's Eve. And I was like, okay. You know, and then until we could figure out what's going on.
Right.
Uh, and then she ended, then they ended up going to court. Or not, it was New Year's Eve, it was, uh, Thanksgiving maybe. I think it was Thanksgiving, so. Um, and then they had to go to court and then they got a temporary restraining order to allow them to park in their, what they think is their driveway. So, this, it's a mess. That, that's, that's why I brought it up.
So, and, and the status of, of that stretch right now is no parking?
No.
There's.
No, it's not yet. It's not.
The status is you can park down there, except for the winter parking ban restriction. You can park there during the day, I think on either side of the road, cause there's no signs. But everybody on that street has off-street parking. However, I'm assuming that when people have guests over, let's say, let's say even property thirty-two or thirty-one, if they're having Thanksgiving, and they're gonna have twenty people over, they're gonna park on the street?
Somebody's on the street. I, I agree with what you're saying, Al.
So, that, that's, but she was looking for a temporary solution. She's like, what do I do if I have someone over and I can't park on the street? And I said, well. Uh, she says, we'll make do, we'll park people up on, on Clark Terrace or Salem Street if there, if there's parking up there. Um, but then, you know, she's like, what do, what do we do about our situation where if we have two cars and for whatever reason, we don't get the driveway approved, you know, through a survey or whatever, then what are we gonna do? And you're right, this is probably the only one, it was probably a small house and it was probably only one car for years and years and before that, probably no cars, right? So.
And currently, there's no parking from Salem Street to Ash currently, that narrow section, right?
Right.
Uh, there's not any, there's no, no parking signs.
No, no parking.
It's only for the winter parking being you can't park. On both sides of the street, I believe. Winter parking, you can't park on either side of the street.
Okay, let's, let's go visit this thing. Are you folk, are, are you guys available this Saturday?
Maybe we can find this one.
Yeah. You available Saturday?
I can do it Sunday too.
Sunday?
Would Sunday work best for everybody?
Sunday's better for me, cause I go into work for eleven, so.
Will Sunday morning be okay with you, Jim? On, that would be the eighth, no, the eleventh? The eleventh?
Saturday's the seventeenth.
Saturday's the seventeenth. We're already, we're on to. Oh, um, what, early morning?
Yeah, we'll be there, meet at eight o'clock again.
Okay.
You okay with that, Bo? Or do you, you gotta work at the church or?
Or you gotta dig a grave or something?
I can do that tomorrow.
Okay, so, can we put a, a public meeting on for the.
I'm gonna move this on to the agenda on, on the twenty-six also, and then you want us to post a quorum meeting on Saturday and you guys are gonna meet.
Sunday.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Sunday. Sunday, the eighteenth.
That would be plenty of time.
So, Brenda, if you could post that.
What time?
Eight, eight in the morning. I get, I apologize, Administrator. We just didn't even walk down there. I fully appreciate what the.
I mean, I drove by.
This looks.
I didn't get it.
And I looked at the house because I knew which house.
Okay, we'll take care of it. Next on our agenda is new business. Reappoint Beth, Beth McPherson as registrar. Mr. Administrator?
Yep, this is her, uh, appointment term is running out in March and we need to reappoint her. Selecting a.
Willing and able.
She's looking forward to it, I think.
I make a motion to reappoint Beth McPherson as a registrar.
I have a motion. Do you hear a second?
Second.
I got a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
There you go, you have that. Community comparison review and approval. We go through this every, every year. Do we do, do an annual, uh, matrix?
For you?
Uh, actually Brenda helps put it, put it together and, uh, in advance of, uh, having the discussion of what other towns would we consider. Uh, I had her look at a couple of other towns in the area in central Mass, um, and just, uh, pull together any information. Uh, the things we look at, population, size of the budget, per capita income, tax bills, et cetera. So, we added Southbridge, Uxbridge and West Boylston to the list. to the list, and you have all the numbers in front of you. Uh, so our currently, and what has been our 10-town comparables have been Athol, Charlton, Dudley, Lester, Millbury, Northbridge, Oxford, Palmer, Ware, and Webster. And there's been discussion in the past about whether Athol makes sense because it's, you know, so far away, it's northern Worcester County, and it's, um.
You know, Mr. Administrator, it seems like every year we go through this, and we try to perfect this, but any analysis is going to be a jagged analysis. You know, there's going to be something that is going to, we're going to be looking at per capita, so, per capita income. So it may be Athol and not, you know, and not Shoesbury. Uh, so, um, I looked at it. I don't have, have a big issue. And if it, if it comes down to it, it's our job to ask to get additional numbers from, from a, from another community, depending on the situation. But I think this is a good list.
So just keep the top ones and don't use the bottom three. We're going to drop those three from the list.
Because you go with 10, Tony.
Yeah, 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 okay. Well, you know, we have, we have it in our, we have it in our records. Yeah, we have the info. We'll just officially go with the 10.
Okay.
If everyone's okay with that, I don't want to add. Brenda, thank you for the work. Um, and it's not to say we won't use the communities you did research on at some point, but officially, we'll go with the 10, the top 10, again.
There's always something when it comes to trying to make comparisons that, that makes, that skews the, the comparisons.
Look at, look at the population density in between Spencer and Webster.
Right.
Yeah.
358 to 1,000.
There are no perfect comparisons.
There's no, there's no, you know, I would say that probably, I always thought Leicester was a perfect, uh, our twin in many ways, but even that veers off in certain aspects. So it's not a perfect science, but thanks for the effort. So I, my personal opinion, just go with the 10 that we have, if that's okay with the board.
So just need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt?
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second?
Uh, any other discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have our comparison. Town administrator report, fiscal year 2016 budget update.
Yeah, originally on the calendar, I was going to discuss tonight, um, revenue forecast, uh, but the, uh, my mistake is that the MMA conference isn't until the end of January, uh, the 23rd and 24th this year, so, um, Governor Baker, uh, won't, he'll be announcing at that meeting his proposal for revenues. So I don't have anything till tonight, other than just an update on the calendar, that budgets are, are being submitted this week. Um, whatever I do have for capital requests, we can discuss next week. I had that on the 21st, just an initial look, initial list. I know the one thing, we saw the radio project from, so the, um, project for the fire department in terms of upgrading that. That's the one issue that I know off the top of my head that's, uh, still hanging out there, the salt shit at the highway department. So there will be, those will be filtering in, and we'll eventually go through the process with the capital planning committee beginning on January 27th. Um, but I don't have anything exciting and new for you in terms of the budget, um, other than it's underway. The process is underway. So, but I'll have, happy to answer any questions, if you've read anything or had discussions that you'd like to bring up now. I'm more than happy to discuss them.
Oh, then you should get a nice bump in, uh,
A little bit of bump.
Yeah, for local aid on the, uh, chapter 90.
Chapter 90. So one of the first things that Governor Baker did when he came into office was release the $100 million that had been approved in, um, the, uh, transportation bond bill from, uh, last summer. There was originally, uh, a proposal to have $300 million released to, um, local communities and towns, which would have given us an increase in chapter 90 by 50%. And that, even though the bill was passed by the House and the Senate, it was never signed by Governor Patrick. So once it was, once Baker came in, he signed it and released that $100 million. Um, that does not include, uh, 31 South. Um, there was, uh, I think it was 100 and I don't know, it was a big, a big number. I don't want to say the wrong number, but maybe 11 billion, does that sound about right? Um, well, 11 million for that item, but the total dollar amount that was included in, in that
10 points on.
In the rest of that, uh, bond bill. Again, I don't remember off the top of my head, but there's, there's another bond bill, or this 100 million that was part of that. Um, there's another, another portion that is all the other monies, and that has not been released yet.
And I wasn't bringing that up later, but since we're talking about it, uh, is it appropriate for us to write to our delegation and remind them about these?
We can do that, or they will be here on February 23rd. They'll be here for their annual discussion. So we can, uh, as we usually do, is before they come in, we will send them a letter of topics to discuss, and if you want, I can, I can put that in writing and say that, uh,
I, I would, I would, this is me personally, I'll just send a letter ahead of, ahead of that meeting, and then we can refer to it when they come to us and
At least get it out there.
Get it out there, and maybe they can give us an update when they do come in.
I agree with Tony.
So if we could, if that all right with the board, we send a letter, um, inquiring into those, uh, those road funds that have been
Absolutely.
Approved but not released.
That's a great idea. Do you need a motion?
Not
You just, you know what we want to have anyways.
Anything else, Mr. Administrator, on the budget? Any other questions from the board?
Just a question for Adam.
Yep.
There is still, there remains a shortfall, though, right, with revenue, for, as we finish the, finish the fiscal year, the budget that was approved um, under the Patrick administration. Are we, are we facing any cuts?
Uh, well, as you know, the NIC cuts were announced, and back, uh, they did not affect local aid, um, and were not finalized. Um, however, um, there's, you know, Mass General's taxpayers foundation says the number could be as high as a bill, you know, $30 billion budget.
The shortfall?
But A and F, on their way out the door, said it was more like 300 million. So, um, they're showing some widespread. So I think you're going to have to wait and see. Once the new governor comes in, his administration is coming in, taking a look at forecasts, um, and to see where the budget will end up.
I know that they, he's done 100 or 120-day high freeze for all, uh, so I'm sure they're going to start looking at, uh, at ways to, uh, save money that way.
But has he pledged to not take it out of local?
Well, he doesn't have, he doesn't have that option. The only people, he can propose that, but it's, it's, the, uh, the House and Senate already put a stop to that, so.
Okay.
Local aid's not going, going anywhere.
All right. Any additional questions? All right, let's move on to board liaison reports. All I can say is that we're, discussions are continuing around, um, uh, negotiations with, uh, teachers and where that's going to go. I, I haven't been called into a meeting yet, but, uh, that's still out there. The Sugden Block RFP, did you read that yet?
It's, I think it's going to be, Laura's putting the advertisements in tomorrow.
Okay.
So the advertisement's going in tomorrow on that?
Just, I just went into Jeff there, but about the Sugden Block. We had a water main, I mean, the water pipe froze down there sadly. Okay, in curves, no, in curves. Okay, uh, so we had to split the radio in half, we had the fire department there, had to get Troy down there, the whole nine wheels. Uh, ended up breaking the door, getting in, because nobody had a key. And my key didn't work, so I don't know, you know, what we're going to do about that. But right now, it's, heat's back on, and it is running. Now, the, the meter is in curves name. Okay, I don't know. Did we ever put it in our name? That, what about the electricity?
Um, I'll have to check with the records.
Okay, we need to get those switched over, and the same with the hole in the wall there. That one there, too. We had to, we had to fire that one up, too, because that was, the boiler was off on that one. So, just to let you know, we, we're going to have a good luck down there, so.
It continues.
Thank you.
Anything, anything, well, other than that, um, I'd like to get together with, uh, the interested parties on, on relaunching the, again, we mentioned the Economic Development Committee. I've had a conversation with a few business owners in town, so I'd like to get the specifics down, how we get that, that going. I don't know who that is, or
All I need is, uh, two appointees, essentially. Just appoint two, please. I think John is the selectman rep, and I think we have, um, I think it was three to five people, if I remember. I think it was maybe one planning board. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think it was one selectman, one planning board member, and then at least one at-large and up to three, I think.
You want to look that up and you will accept the charge.
So I think we've, I know Laura has just updated her new, um, she puts a list on their website in terms of available positions, and, you know, people who want to volunteer. Um, but if you have a couple of names, we can certainly talk to them.
Well, I, I have, I have a couple. I don't want to bet your money right now, but I'll reach out to them, and I'll let John know about who I'll talk to.
All they need to do is reach out to me, put a volunteer form in, uh, fill that out, and, um, and we can have a discussion about whether that appointment makes sense.
Okay. All right, next item, citizens input. Anyone want to come forward and be heard? Okay. Board member and staff comments. Um, I have a, a request of the administrator, not to do immediately, but we have a lot of projects going on. We had the downtown revitalization. We have the interest in spurring economic development. I would like a wash list outside of those efforts of, of possible incentives that we can offer um, for businesses or to spur business growth, what we have out there at our disposal. I'm not saying we're going to do it. I just want to be educated on every possible
Yeah, everything can be available to us as far as, you know, tax incentives and I think a perfect opportunity will be when the final report for the downtown study is submitted. They're going to have recommendations, specific recommendations for each individual property in terms of what funding source, what grant, what agency puts out that grant, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So rather than me just doing it out of, you know, I mean, here's, you're going to get a very narrow look, um, in that report. It'll have, um, you know, whether they go over each specific property, but the report will have each specific property in the back. Typically, what they do, there's a matrix. It'll say, you know, what, what grant, uh, is available, what you can apply for, um, what are the requirements, et cetera, et cetera, and what agency. So, um, it'll be in like one nice neat little package to hand. I mean, I could certainly go right down right now and say, Community Development Block grant, I could say, you know, we, we've done those and what other things, but in tax incentives, there's, um, you know, certain things that you can do there, but it'll all be in that report.
And that'd be great. If they're all in that report, that's fine, but I just want to put the, the heads up there that if there's something out there that is not on that list, I want everything to come to this board, because I'd like to start discussing how we can tangibly use some of these things.
Well, I think
You know, outside of that project.
Right. I think the plan would be to take that report, take that plan, and hand it to the Economic Development Committee and say, these are, you know, things that Economic Development Committee can be working towards, um, to help, you know, foster economic development in that community. Someone's got to reach out to the owner and, and, and work and coordinate a grant opportunity. Are they even interested? You know, those types of things. Are you interested in an incentive, et cetera, et cetera.
I just, I, if there's any deltas there as far as what is in that report we get from those consultants and what we could offer, I'd like that included in a, in a wash list. Outside of that, we could do this, 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 and this. So, uh, just a heads up, and we can, we can make that materialize at where, whenever it's appropriate.
Tony, and on that subject, um, there is a media union station tomorrow, a, um, a presentation by the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. At 8:30, I'll be attending. It's on the subject of economic development incentive programs in the state. Just tending with Adam with what, you know, he thought it was going to be covered, but hopefully I can, you know, just educate myself there on some of the opportunities as well. You know, and it, it was, Rosemary Scrivens had copied us on that. It, are we still planning to bring her before the, the
I can't remember if we're open to inviting her. We just didn't get a date on it yet, so.
Okay, right.
Give the administrator
Do you want to wait until the Economic Development Committee is formed? Do you want to have them meet with her? Do you want to
That's probably, that might be a good idea, with a, a good way to kick off the economic development.
So we, she could meet with them and us, or just them, and then get a narrow focus and make a big deal out of this kickoff.
Yep, so I, I think, having said that, then if anyone has recommendations on, on, I'd like to get some business people Yeah, forward contacts to me, business, uh, business retailers or people you think would be good additions to this Economic Development Committee. Send them to me. I'll work with John, and we'll start reaching out and getting people, getting this moving. At that point, we'll decide when we bring her in.
We've had a few folks, you know, in our, in those revitalization committee, um, program meetings, and, you know, there are a few people with energy there. We, I think it would be appropriate to tap for this.
I know, two of those definitely will get involved, so we have to reach out to, to them. So forward your ideas or your contacts to, to me, and I'll work with John. I did forget that, uh, next week, um, the Citizens Soul Gym Memorial with the Exchange Club, their meeting's going to start. Uh, the memorial out by the, the park.
Correct.
We're kicking off our meetings next week on that.
So there's a steering committee with representation from different committees in town, and that, you start your, going over the design concepts
Right.
On the 20th.
Right.
Yep, and we also got the, the updates on the trees from the tree ward, so. So there'll be a public hearing convention in February.
Yep. Forgot to add that, so that's going on as well.
One more thing, Tony. There was an open house at the new yoga studio on, on Main Street. I was unable to attend on Sunday because of some commitments at church. But just like we invited the, you know, the Twisted Potter to come in, maybe, I'd be happy to reach out to her and ask her if she'd like to come and just, you know, present herself here at the select board.
Whenever we have the opportunity to bring in a business, I think, I think we should.
It's, it's It's there in the Sugden Block, right?
Correct.
Maybe we should reach out to the
Hope they're warm, I call them.
Yeah, that, that'd be a great idea. Whoever, you know, if they, if they serve the community and we, you know, uh, they're welcome to come. You know, I, I, and I don't know if we're cutting off our noses by our face, but I mean, I've heard in the community about the lack of um, presence from the media at our meetings. I don't know if there's something we should do, or, you know, um
They should make Al the reporter.
What do they say? No news is good news.
Cover the border for the new leader. I don't, I just think it's a tool for us to get information.
I, I spoke with Kevin Flanders, who's the representative of the Spencer New Leader this morning, and because of the restructuring in that organization, um, we basically, I basically give him information via email, and then he writes it.
Okay, so we can have any story we wanted tonight. Everything is rosy and we're
There you go.
So. Okay. All right, I just want to bring that up.
And TNG, the same thing. I think she's got a lot more towns to cover, and maybe there's a lot more, uh, exciting controversy in other towns that maybe until we get back on the controversy track, then
Don't even say that. Okay. Any other board member staff comments? All right. Next item on the agenda is a request for executive session. So, uh, somebody's had a motion?
Sure. I move for a, a executive session under Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Paragraph 6, for the purpose of considering the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate, as the chair cited, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating the position of the public body.
Take a roll call vote. Selective Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Woodbury?
Mr. Woodbury?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Yep.
Chair says aye. Um, we have not seen that we will, uh, we will reconvene only to close adjournments, so, um, thank you very much. And our next meeting is next Monday?
Nope, it's Wednesday, the 21st, because Monday's a holiday.
The 21st, 6:00 PM. It's a, it's a work, workshop, Memorial Town Hall, Record Social. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.